Twenty is called for order. As you know, it is a work session and we want to welcome each of you here and trust that everybody has been keeping safe and that you've been able to at least get out and enjoy some of the weather outside. But at this point, I'm gonna move along to on the agenda and I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Don Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. It's good to see you virtually. I wish we could be face to face, but we're working with the limitations that we have. I have three items that I'd like you to consider today. Item two A is the Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute Recommendation to the Board of Trustees, and this recommendation is Larry Taylor, a long-serving member of the Board of Trustees, and this is a four-year term, July the first, 2020 through June the 30th, 2024. I've spoken both to Dr. Porch and to Mr. Taylor, and this is something that they very much desire our board to consider, so I'd like to respectfully request your consideration for that.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve Larry Taylor to be this year's appointee to the CCC and TI Board of Trustees?
Chairman Pendle, Chairman Pendle, I make a motion that we approve Larry Taylor for a four-year term for CCC.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second to the motion.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And there is no opposition, so Larry Taylor will be our new Board of Trustees Recommendation for this year.
Item two B, Mr. Chairman and Board members, is a Caldwell County Funding Request. This is a local appropriation, current expense, and this is a request that's made to our county commissioners, and we've looked through this as we've gone through the school year and we've been dealing with our budget, and we feel like where we're at as a county and a community with respect to the COVID issues that we're dealing with and the uncertainty that we have in terms of tax revenues and lots of other questions that we would like to not ask for an increase, but simply make a request that our level of funding that we received this school year would remain, and David Johnson can share a little bit on that, David, if you would please, just to give an amount and any background information that you would like to share. But we feel like that the cuts that we've made, that we continue to make, we don't know what the outcome will be ultimately at OQ, but we certainly are going through with what we suggested we would with positions that we have captured in trying to move more and more folks from low from our local or low wealth into state pay positions. There's certainly going to be significant savings this year. As I've mentioned before, and I want the public to be aware of this as well, you know, I'm fearful that we're going to look a lot better on paper than we expected, and part of that, if not all of that, is going to be due to the virus and the money that's been saved as a result of that. We can't move forward in a budgeting way as if the virus is going to happen next year. We need to make sure that we continue on with our original plans and that we reduce the number of personnel and look at our other expenses, and we want to continue to do that. But I feel like it would be the proper proper move to make to not request additional funding from the commissioners at this time if we could remain constant with what we have this year. David?
Okay, so our county appropriations this year for year 2020, fifteen million, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That was an increase of three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the previous year, 2019. We received fourteen million, eight hundred thousand. Going back to 2017, we received fourteen million, eight hundred thousand. So for those three years, we basically held stagnant. This past year, we did receive, like I said, three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That was a pretty significant increase over the past, past three years, and with the retirements and as we manage our allotments more efficiently, we're hoping that it'll have a it will have a fun impact on our fund balance for the coming year, if we can receive that level of funding at fifteen million, one fifty, six ninety-nine.
And for our board, I want to stress that this is just the local request. We also received the funding that we get from the state and also the federal funding and grants and things like that. It's going to take us some time to get the complete budget built, to be able to come back to you and say, this is where we feel like we are with respect to allocation and use of fund balance. And a big, big part of that picture is going to be what the ultimate outcome is to us from a budget perspective with the with the COVID virus that we've been dealing with. So all this is at this point is the local request from the commissioners. We'll continue to do our work on the complete budget and come back to you with that at another day. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully submit that request for the board's consideration.
Okay, do I hear a motion from the board that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent and Mr. Johnson, that this year's request of the county commission be fifteen million, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which reflects the same amount as we had last year? That is correct, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Phillips?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Do I hear a motion that we approve the fifteen, one fifty, six ninety-nine?
I'll make a motion we approved the amount, same as last year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second to the motion.
Anybody have any comments or any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My next item is item two C, Policy Revisions and/or New Adoptions. This is up for approval. These have been put out for the comment period, and these policies involve twenty-three oh-two, which is remote participation in board meetings, forty-two thirty, communicable diseases students, fifty-fifty emergency closings, seventy-five oh-three telenetworking, seventy-five sixty, permitted salary deductions for absences and discipline of certain exempt employees, and seventy-six twenty payroll deductions. These all were related to COVID-19 that came to us through the North Carolina School Board Association. I'd like to respectfully present those to you for approval.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the policies as outlined by Dr. Phillips, and I believe those numbers being twenty-three oh-two, forty-two thirty, fifty-fifty, seventy oh-three, seventy-five sixty, and seventy-six twenty? Is that correct, Dr. Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. It's seventy-five oh-three. You may have broken up for a minute. Just want to make sure we have the right number.
All right. Seventy-five oh-three. And then the next one was seventy-five sixty?
That's correct.
Okay, so a series of six there. Do I hear a motion that we approve the six policies as mentioned by Dr. Phillips?
Chairman Pendle, I move that we approve the six policies as have been presented by Chairman Phillips and by Superintendent Phillips and which you have just specified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments on any? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for that. And Dr. Phillips, I assume that we don't have anything else at this point in time. We'll move on to auxiliary services. Dr. Church?
Good morning, everybody. I hope you all are doing well today. I'll have three items for you to review over this next coming week, and they are all usual customary contract renewals or contracts. The first is maintenance and custodian maintenance and bus garage uniforms. We put those out to bid. We currently use UniFirst. Savitas is the, the new contractor that we'll be presenting to you next week, and that will be for a three-year contract for uniforms. Also, there are three renewal contracts for Watts Cleaning Services at William Norre Middle School, South Caldwell High School, West Caldwell High School. There is not an increase in the contract amount. The only difference is William Norre Middle School, we're moving from a one-year contract to a three-year contract. We've done two, two-year contracts with Watts, and now we're going to move it to a three-year. And also, they have requested our original contracts state that they get paid in ten monthly increments. They have requested twelve monthly increments. The, the contract amount has not increased. We're just paying them twelve months instead of ten months. So that will come to you next week, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Just usual customary.
UniFirst is the bus garage uniforms?
That's currently, but it will be Savitas, or excuse me.
Okay.
Santas will be the new contractor.
So this is for our information?
For your information, yes.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Church. Next, Dr. Bill Griffin.
Yes, I don't currently have anything at this point, other than as we continue to look at allocations for this, this upcoming school year. We're probably going to have to have some discussion about our kindergarteners and getting them, whether it be in screened or enrolled, to make sure that we go ahead and get those in place moving forward. But I'll be talking to my staff this week with that, and then going back and looking at each of our, our allocations, our, our numbers as reflected toward next year. That's all I have really at this point.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Griffin. Dr. McKellen?
Good morning. I hope everyone's doing well this morning. It is nice to see you after being gone for a few weeks. This morning, I have a presentation. I think Kathy's going to put it up on the screen so that you can see it, but it has to do with grading, with the governor announcing that we are out of school in terms of no students are returning to the building, and we will continue remote learning through the end of the school year. We have some updated information from the Department of Public Instruction about how we are to do grades for this school year. And I have it divided up into a couple of different sections just to make it easier based on the grade spans. I'll give Kathy a minute to get it set up. You also, in addition to the presentation, there are two one-page informational sheets that the Department of Public Instruction has released related to grades kindergarten through grade eleven, as well as regarding our seniors. So those are also in board docs, but I'm gonna walk you through the presentation. Here we go. So when you're looking at this screen, so the way the guidance was given to us, we have the K-five grade span, the six-eight grade span, then we have grades nine through eleven, and then we have information for about our seniors. And with this, the goal of this state board was that they did not want the remote learning to hurt any student. They are worried, just as we are worried about equity of services, the impact that just switching over to a remote learning can have on students. So the main thing was that from March thirteenth moving forward, that whatever happened, we weren't going to negatively impact students in any way, shape, or form. We wanted to have a positive impact for our remote learning. So if we can move to the next slide. Kathy? Or Dr. Phillips? I'm not sure who's, who's driving. Or I, I can keep talking and we'll get the slides to catch up at some point. So when you're thinking about elementary level, your grades kindergarten through fifth, there will be no grades. So students in these grade levels will receive no grades. K-two did not receive grades like an A, B, C, D. Anyway, they were on the scale of a one, two, three, four about mastery. But for this school year, there will be no grades, or at least at the elementary level. But what the teachers will do is they are going to provide written feedback to students and their families, letting them know where the student was regarding the standards for the course. So that is communication that will go out to the parents and the students. We are also K through five. Each teacher will be responsible for creating some feedback about the academic as well as the social emotional information for each student, and that will go to the teacher for the next grade level. So kind of like here are the student's strengths, here's where they were struggling. We are still waiting on some more information from DPI as to exact contents that we need to include in the feedback going to the teacher for the next grade level. But so basically at K-five, just remember there are no final grades. Well, we will be providing feedback to parents and students about how they did, and then we will be providing feedback, getting it ready to go to the teacher of that student for the next grade level. When you get to the middle school, so six-eight, they will get grades, but it'll be the grades in sense of what DPI has called a PC-19 code, which basically means the path is the student has passed the course for that grade level. And then, or and if they didn't, and then we would put in a WC code, which means withdrawal. So nobody, there are no Fs that are going out at the six-eight grade level this year, just like at the elementary level. We will be providing written feedback to parents and students about how their student performed this year. Well, teachers will also be preparing information to share with this student's next year's teacher so that they have that. But DPI went with the withdrawal code in lieu of an F because they wanted, they think of it as is the student, that we just don't have enough evidence to show that the student mastered the course. We're not saying that the student has not mastered it. We just haven't seen enough evidence. Students will either have a PC-19 or a WC. So it's a, they either pass or they withdrew from the course, and then we will follow up with feedback to the parent and student explaining those codes. When you get to the high school level, it gets a little bit more complicated because if you think about high school, we've got grade point averages, we have class rank, it gets a little bit more competitive, and those grades can have a big impact on a student as they're thinking about what they're doing post-high school. So per guidelines from the State Department, students will be able to choose whether they want to take a letter or a numeric grade, like a ninety-eight or an eighty-eight, whatever they earned, or do they want to take a pass or withdrawal code, just like we were using at the sixth through eighth grade level. So students, if they choose the numeric grade, of course, they're going to get course credit, but that numeric grade will, will be calculated in the student's grade point average. Okay? If they go the pass or withdrawal route, they will still get course credit if they get the pass. There will be no course credit if they withdrew, and whether it's a pass or withdrew, that would not count in a student's grade point average. So the only way that a grade from this spring semester will, would count in a student's grade point average is if that student chooses numeric grade, and that means that they are choosing to have that grade count in as part of their grade point average. So that goes into class rank, that goes into, you know, when students are applying to colleges, colleges look at the, those GPAs. We certainly will be creating videos, creating documentation to go out to explain how this works to parents and students. Because it is important. I can decide that for two of my classes, I want the numeric grade to count, and for two of the classes, I want it to be a pass. So it's up to that student and parent to choose for each course that they're in, and we're in four courses in a semester. Do I want it to count my GPA, and I want a numeric grade, or do I just want the pass code in, it's like this semester, you know, I did what I needed to do, and it counts, but it's not going to affect my grade point average. We are going to do our best to get in touch with every student before summer starts, but we do have a forty-five day window in 2020, 2021 to make sure that we reach any student that we did not reach here at the end of the school year. So nobody's going to be penalized if we do not get in contact with them. But our goal is to come in contact with every student so that we can make sure that they're making the best choice. Counselors will be playing a large role in that process as well. Then we get to our seniors. And the big focus with our seniors is graduation. With, and really with all students, whatever they made in the fall, whatever they made for first semester courses, they're getting credit for that just like normal. For our seniors, they're going to get credit for their fall courses, and if they were in year-long classes, whatever grade they had at the end of that first semester, they will get a, that grade will count in their grade point average. Okay? Anything in the spring semester for all seniors, and this was decided by the Department of Public Instruction, anything in spring semester, students are either getting the pass or the withdrawal. They don't have a choice about grades, or does it count my GPA or not? That, that decision was made at the state level. And it's all based on what they had done up until March thirteenth. At any point in time, whatever students did past March thirteenth, and we know that students have worked hard, teachers can take that into account and either potentially could raise a student's grade, but we could never drop a student's grade past the March thirteenth. If a senior did have an F as of March thirteenth, so basically if they had an F for the third nine weeks, then our job as a school district and as the teachers and schools themselves was to work with those students and bring that F up to a passing grade so that we could put that PC code in there. Other items of note, the state board for this year's graduating class only has approved that all students could graduate with a minimum of twenty-two credits. So that supersedes our local requirements of twenty-eight, but they, for this graduating class only, as long as a student has twenty-two credits and they meet all of the North Carolina graduation requirements, then they can graduate. So they, basically, they don't want any student harmed by what has happened with COVID-19 and moving to remote learning. They did waive the CPR requirement for the class of 2020. Most of our students get CPR as a ninth grader, so it's not really an issue for our students. But if it were, were to be an issue, then that was waived. And then for occupational course of study, they did reduce the number of hours, number of paid work hours required, because again, they just don't want to penalize students if they can't go into work due to the circumstances that we are in. Where do we go from here? As I started the presentation, we are continuing remote learning through the end of the school year. So our teachers have done a great job with that. We applaud our students for the hard work that they're doing. We do expect more guidance to be released from DPI on Tuesday tomorrow, and so we will use that information to ensure that we develop a template. So we'll be developing a template for what the feedback looks like going to parents and students, and then a template for what our teachers will complete to provide information for the teacher of the next grade level, so that it's uniform across the district. And we know that due to these circumstances, we may have some students that enroll in a different school at the beginning of next school year based on things outside of the student's control, and we want to make sure we can get the same information and that that can follow that student wherever that student may enroll in the, in fall of 2020. And then, you know, just making sure that we're communicating with all of our stakeholders about what's to be expected as we close out this school year. So do you guys have any questions?
Katrina, can I add a couple of things just to ask you to touch on?
Sure.
Number one is the fact that we're going to give our high school students the opportunity to do credit recovery if they take a, if there is a failing grade. I want you to mention that. And then what about the local ability that we have with the questions from a couple of parents about special points or honors and things like that? Where do we stand with that?
So, so certainly, like if it is, as Dr. Phillips said, if a student, a senior did have an F, then we were working with them in credit recovery and or packets home to make sure that they ended up with a passing grade moving forward so that they could graduate and meet those requirements. With the stipulation from DPI, basically about spring semester not counting, because we're going with seniors, we're going with that pass code or that withdrawal code, that basically means that that does not apply in a student's GPA. We have contacted DPI because we feel like, we know that we have some students that had, we counted the third nine weeks' grade as part of their GPA, they would have, they would have met their requirements either for an honors, to be an honor scholar and/or to be a North Carolina academic scholar. And so we, DPI says that that does not count and that we should not be counting that. We've checked with some local school districts who are doing what, what we want to do here, and that's for the purposes of determining who gets recognized, we want to include that third nine weeks' grade for those students who have worked hard to meet those requirements and recognize all students that have met their requirements. It may not say that, you know, when you look at their final GPA on their transcript, because we are following the rules with DPI, but we are going to hold harmless the students who have worked hard to meet those honor designations and or diploma endorsements based on their third nine weeks' grades.
Katrina, I want to add one more thing to you. Just, this is a work session meeting, and I want the board to be aware of some things that have either happened or in the process of happening. General Assembly met on Friday, and there's some legislation that was passed, but it's unclear in a couple of areas. School calendar could be impacted, will be impacted. The other is requirement that we have for fourth-grade students, and it states in the law that at some point within ten days of school being held, that currently, that upcoming fourth graders will be administered the third-grade reading EOG. And we had a legislative meeting on, on Thursday, and it was not clear at that point whether the General Assembly truly intended it to be the true EOG or some other form of assessment that would allow fourth-grade teachers to have a good idea of where their students were at. So you want to talk about that if we've got any clarification, Katrina?
I'm just, I'm I'm trying to think. I did look at the Senate bill this weekend, but I don't know, I've not seen clarification as to whether it truly is the third grade, end of grade, or beginning of year, fourth grade. Really, there, there should, should not be any difference. But I will check to see if Craig Bryson has any updates from testing and accountability that can be shared.
For the board to know, I've advocated that we don't give the EOG, but that we give some type of a school net assessment that's a little bit shorter. It doesn't create the same type of anxiety and angst, certainly ten days into the school year, but we also do need to have a reliable idea of where students are at so that we can determine what types of interventions and remediation may be needed. But I don't necessarily believe it has to be the EOG, but we want to determine if that's required based on the way the law is written.
Katrina?
Yes, sir.
With your middle school and with your high school, nine through eleven, withdrawn simply means that they just didn't take the course.
Well, it means that they did not
Any credit.
They didn't master all the standards, but we just, we are not going to put an F down for any student. So it's, they withdrew from the class as in DPI's language, they did not master the standard. So they didn't complete the course, so to speak. Does that make sense?
So if they choose to take that course again, they're going to have to begin at the beginning?
Correct. They would.
So it's like a withdrawal in college.
At the high school level, they could do credit recovery for a withdrawal code in addition to, that would be one option. So they could do credit recovery, or they could repeat the whole course for credit. And that's really at the high school level. Middle school, while they do get a grade, it's not quite this, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't, they don't have a grade point average at the middle school. It would just be important information for the teacher of the next grade to know that that student did not master all of did not master all of those standards. We don't necessarily, and even with an F, we don't necessarily hold a student back from going from seventh grade to eighth grade if they have an F in math and they had, you know, Bs, Ds, and A, you know, whatever grade. And the other, that doesn't, you know, an F does not necessarily retain a student. The principal makes the determination on retention on a number of different factors. One thing I didn't talk about retention in the language, and you'll, you'll see this on the one-page sheets, we cannot retain a student unless we were already having conversations about retention prior to March 13th. So whatever happened post-March 13th cannot affect whether we choose to retain a student or pass the student on to the next grade level. And that really goes for K-8.
So Katrina, I got a couple of questions about the credits, the 22 that the seniors have to have this year. So if, going back to Darrell's part, if a, if a student nine through 11 withdraws from a class, we require 28 hours after this year. Will that withdrawal affect those 28 hours? I mean, is that going to cut back on the hours of credit that they have?
So it certainly, you know, if they get a W, a WC code, a withdrawal code, they will not get credit for that course. So in order, if it's a course they need for graduation, like in English or math, or, you know, then they would certainly have to get that credit either through credit recovery or by repeating the course. Now, if it's an elective course that would, that is not a required, like I have to have so many English, math, science, social studies. If it's not a required course per se, then it's just one less credit that they earn. So if they're in school all eight semesters, then they can earn 32 credits. So they, they, they have a little bit of cushion for if they don't get a credit at some point during their high school year.
Okay. So that, that answers that one. So going back to this year's 22 hours, is that specific to seniors only? Because probably there's juniors that have 22 hours.
Correct. It's only for the graduating class or those that should be part of the graduating class of 2020. So they would have entered ninth grade four years ago. And so we, we track the, that's how we track our cohort graduation rate by the, the year a student entered as a freshman and the year that they should graduate as a senior.
Okay, thank you. And I've got one more, just wanting to confirm that I understood what you're saying. For those students that have reached out that were needing a certain grade level this third semester to get the awards or recognition at graduation, we are going to adhere to what the state says with a pass fail. But we are also going to look at those grades and maybe locally adapt that and say, you were here, so we're going to give you the recognition at graduation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I know we've had some parents that's reached out to us, so we need to be able to answer that. And I want to make sure I answered it correctly, obviously, if we did that.
Yes, sir. And we've, we've researched, I mean, it's, it's really just a handful of students. But for that handful of students, it means the world.
Correct. Yeah. If they've worked for it, we should be able to try to reward them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Katrina, one other question. When do you, I assume credit recovery is going to have to be done between now and the beginning of next year? The next school year? In other words, this summer?
So it, so certainly our seniors, we are already working with our seniors who should be graduates this year. Schools are already working with them to recover any necessary credits. And then schools are working on what they're going to do for ninth through 11th graders. That may be, that may have failed a, you know, and that could have been a fall course as well. They may have failed something in the fall, just helping them to stay on grade level moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else, Dr. McKellen?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's very helpful. Next, let me mention, and probably most of you are aware, that this is Teacher Appreciation Month. And we need to, when we see teachers, we need to tell them how great a job they're doing. We, we know how great, how great they have been in the past. But certainly, in the last couple of months, we have had tremendous work going on in this very challenging time. And they have rose to the occasion. And I don't think any of us can be any more proud of the job that they have done here in Caldwell County with their children, keeping in touch with them, providing the help that they need. So whenever we get an opportunity this week, let's reach out to our teachers and tell them how much we, we do indeed appreciate what they do. Next item on the agenda is closed session. Do I hear a motion that we go into closed session?
Chairman, Chairman, panel, I make the motion we go into closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, period 11A1, and North Carolina General Statute 115C-321 to consult with, consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privileges as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318, period 11A3.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes, and we are going into closed session. And Kathy? We need to break.
Yeah. So we sent to a breakout room at this point. You'll see a message. You need to click on join.
So it'll pop up on our screen that we have now.
You got the mic.